We will now call the St. James Parish School Board Meeting to order. One, open of meeting, prayer, Marty Pochette, pledge of allegiance, Raymond Grove.
Our Father.
O God. How may thy name, thy kingdom come, that I will be done on earth as it is in heaven? Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just as it is in the Bible.
Thank you, gentlemen. Role calls. Kelly Cook.
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. DeTillier.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Washington.
Here.
Ms. Cantillo.
Here.
Mr. Pochette.
Here.
President. Flora.
Here.
Discussion and approval of meeting minutes from April 8, 2025, and May 1, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Moved by Raymond Grove, seconded by Sue Byer. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, committee meeting reports. A, Transportation Committee Report of May 1, 2025. Chairperson Marty Pochette.
St. James Parish School Board Transportation Committee Meeting, Thursday, May 1, convened at 4:30. Received a comprehensive review of school year from first student personnel, emphasizing successes, pinpointing challenges, and outlining actionable steps for immediate and long-term improvements in transportation services for St. James Parish schools. At that time, there was no recommendations for anything from the committee. The meeting was adjourned at 5:20 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Pochette. B, Executive Committee Report of May 12, 2025. Chairperson Nicole Flora. The St. James Parish School Board Executive Committee Meeting met on Monday, May 12, at 4 o'clock p.m. in the St. James Parish School Board Meeting Room. Members present Nicole Flora, Angela Washington, and Marty Pochette. Purpose, to review the tentative agenda and set the agenda for the May 13, 2025, School Board Meeting. It was motioned by Marty Pochette, seconded by Angela Washington, and unanimously carried to approve the agenda for the May 13, 2025, School Board Meeting. Is motioned by Marty Pochette, seconded by Angela Washington, that the meeting be adjourned 4:19 p.m. C, Technology Committee Report of May 12, 2025. Chairperson Angela Washington.
St. James Parish School Board Technology Committee Meeting Report, Monday, 12, at 4:21. Members present Angela Washington, Marty Pochette, and Diana Cantillo. Purpose was to discuss and approve the instructional device refresh by Simone Levett, and updates on computers and printers, network, door readers, access points, and panels with Simone as well, and Ricky Bowdoin. The meeting was adjourned. We had motions by Diana Cantillo, seconded by Marty Pochette, and unanimously carried and approved to move forward with option one for instructional device refresh, and adjourned motion by Marty Pochette, seconded by Diana Cantillo. The meeting adjourned at 4:45 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. I need a motion. Motion by Sue, seconded by Diana Cantillo. All in favor?
Aye.
D, Building Committee Report of May 13, 2025. Chairperson Tim DeTillier.
We had the Building Committee, May 13, which is today. We started at 4:15. Members present was Raymond Grove, Marty Pochette, and myself. We discussed several topics and had updates on a lot of the building projects we made, four motions. So, the first one, there was discussion and approval to hire Murray Architects and move forward with the St. James High School tennis court project. It was motioned by Marty, and seconded by Raymond, and unanimously carried to hire Murray Architects and move forward with the St. James High Tennis Court Project. Secondly, motion by Raymond, seconded by Marty, and unanimously carried to approve the change order number one for Lucha High School game gym renovation. Third, motion by Marty, seconded by Raymond, and unanimously carried to approve the hire Murray Architects to move forward with the Lucha High School softball complex renovation. And lastly, motion by Raymond, seconded by Marty, and unanimously carried to approve the change order number one for Cypress Grove Monastery Academy, some additions and renovations. Meeting adjourned, motioned by Raymond, seconded by Marty, and the meeting adjourned at 5:15.
Coach. I need a motion by Raymond Grove.
So move.
Seconded by Angela Washington. You in there, all in favor?
Aye.
Number three, recognitions. A, recognition of congratulations to the Lucha High School girls powerlifting team. Marty Pochette.
Yes. Resolution of congratulations. Whereas the Lucha High School girls powerlifting team were named Division II state champions, whereas the entire powerlifting team and coaching staff deserve recognition and congratulations, which has brought great honor and distinction to the individual athletes, the entire team, the school student body, the faculty and staff, parents, family, and friends of the Parish of St. James. And therefore, be it resolved that the St. James Parish School Board hereby commends these fine student athletes, all Lucha High School girl powerlifting coaches, and the school administrators, parents, and community for their outstanding effort and support. And furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to Athletic Director Dwayne Jenkins and Principal Angie Pochette and be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, girls, and coaches.
Miss Bagendy. You have a couple of words for other people who don't know what's going on?
Thank you to the board for recognizing us again this year. We really appreciate the honor. So, that was a portion of our girls. We have some girls who couldn't come because of work or just delayed. Notice to it from a week ago. But our girls have, once again, represented our school amazingly, with an 18 state championship in a row. They do everything we ask. We love them hard, and they love us back, and they're the amazing group of girls. So for 18 years, 19 really, we've had nothing but success from our girls and hard work and respect, and we love each and every one of them. So thank you guys for being here supporting us.
Appreciate it.
Wait, Miss Bagendy, any board members want to?
It's kind of like a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, in world athletics, you know, you win a championship three, four, maybe five times, and they say, it's a dynasty. I looked in the dictionary, there's nothing for 18 in a row.
We just called it legalizing it.
I just want to make one comment that we hear over and over in education, leadership matters. Thank y'all. It takes dedication and, you know, everything that y'all do to support these girls. We appreciate y'all.
We appreciate it.
Coach Kelly, I appreciate all your hard work, dedication. I know each year, as we continue to win, they change rules. Any next year rule changes we can expect for them to try to eliminate us from winning this?
Well, we always have a tournament on our back, unfortunately. And we just have to keep on raising the bar, is what, I mean, basically, we do each year. So each year, our girls go out there, and if there's a purple and gold Lucha girls following shirt on their chest, they're judged differently. We're up to a higher standard. Hopefully, we bring a standard of course enough, but they can change. But like, my husband and I have been around it. I mean, he's one who's been through it. And we just go keep on doing what we're doing and keep teaching these girls the right way.
Good job.
Thank you.
Miss Bagendy, I'd like to say congratulations to the Lucha girls. And if you guys didn't hear, it's 19 years in a row, they champions.
Technically.
Technically. So the book have 18. There you go. So y'all can spread the words, you know? Get y'all kids who are still in high school, get them involved.
Yes. We got a few more.
Thank you. Congratulations.
B, recognition of congratulations to Lucha High School boys powerlifting team. Tim DeTillier.
Whereas the Lucha High School boys powerlifting team named Division II state champions, whereas the entire powerlifting team and coaching staff deserve recognition and congratulations, which has brought great honor and distinction to the individual athletes, the entire team, the school student body, the faculty and staff, parents, family, and friends in the Parish of St. James. And therefore, be it resolved that the St. James Parish School Board hereby commends these fine student athletes, all Lucha High School boys powerlifting coaches, and the school administrators, parents, and community for their outstanding effort and support. And furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Athletic Director Dwayne Jenkins and Principal Angie Pochette and be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting dated at Lucha, Louisiana, this 13th day of May, 2025. Congratulations.
Coach is bringing the resolution.
Coach is bringing the resolution.
Good job, boys.
Good job, Coach. How many years in the red here?
Good job, boys. Catch up with those girls, huh? Thank you, Coach. Nice seeing y'all.
Congratulations.
C, recognition of students who scored a 30 and above on ACT and students who scored platinum on Work Keys. Simone Levett.
Good evening. It is both a privilege and an honor to stand before you tonight to recognize and celebrate a group of exceptional students from St. James Parish, students who have exemplified academic excellence at the highest level. This evening, we acknowledge those who have achieved a score of 30 or above on the ACT or earned a platinum level on the ACT Work Keys Assessment. The ACT is a nationally standardized college entrance exam designed to assess a student's readiness for post-secondary education. A score of 30 or higher not only reflects outstanding academic ability, but also places a student in the 93rd percentile nationally, meaning they scored higher than 93% of all test takers. Equally remarkable are the students who have attained a platinum level on the ACT Work Keys Assessment. The Work Keys Assessment measures essential workplace skills that are critical for success across a range of industries. A platinum score represents the highest level of achievement, indicating that the student has demonstrated advanced proficiency in all three core assessment areas, skills that are directly aligned with real-world career demands. In Louisiana, high performance on the ACT and Work Keys Assessments plays a key role in scholarship opportunities, including the Taylor Opportunity Program for Students, also known as TOPPS, a scholarship program that provides significant financial support to deserving students pursuing college or career pathways. Tonight, we honor these young scholars, not only for their scores, but their discipline, determination, and drive. They represent the spirit of excellence that makes our community proud. At this time, we would first like to recognize the students who scored a 30 or above on the ACT. When your name is called, you can come forward to receive your certificate, and you can go ahead and stand up here in the front, and then we'll take a group picture after. Kaye Becknow, ACT composite score of 33. Group shot, yes. Davis Madair, composite score of 31. Bailey Landry, composite score of 30. Janaya Landry, composite score of 30. And these were all of our seniors that were just announced. We have a sophomore Nicholas Bagendy with a score of 31. We have a few of our students that cannot attend tonight. Kayden Daigle with a score of 32. Chloe Lorero with a score of 33. And Aiden Nicholas with a score of 31. For our students that scored a platinum level on Work Keys, Nicholas Bertholot. Noah Miet. Dustin Roussel Jr. Brady Armon. And Colton Roussel. We also have one other student that cannot attend tonight that scored a platinum on Work Keys, and that's Beau Gidry. And for our group picture? And congratulations again to these outstanding students for their hard work and incredible achievements.
Number four, business finance instruction. A, discussion and approval to award the St. James High School Beta Club $2,000 to help offset the cost of their trip to the National High School Beta Convention. This item aligns with Priority Two of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Sean Oo and Kyrie Arseneau. And students.
Good evening. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity, for taking our students, once again, this is the second year in a row that our senior beta has made it to the national level. And without your help, we would not be able to do that. So thank you so much. And we do have a student that does have something to say.
And Ms. Arseneau, we're back. And we just wanted to say thank you again for helping our Beta Club continue to grow. Earlier this semester, the senior Beta Club had the opportunity to compete at the Louisiana State Senior Convention in Lafayette. Students participated in academic contests, group contests, and art exhibits. We are thrilled to announce that after a second year in a row, Mia Rothman, Mia Way. She's a junior at St. James High School. This is her second year in a row winning fiber arts competition at state. So we are now headed to Orlando to compete at national convention with Mia. I never dreamed we would be here a year later. I thought I had a few more years to get my feet wet. But I do want to let you guys know how incredibly hardworking these outstanding students are. This year, I could have not been more proud of their dedication and accomplishments, as well as their efforts to help our community. Throughout the year, we've welcomed missionaries. We've partnered up with student council to help organize a trunk-or-treat for our community, as well as a Toys for Tots drive. At convention, we supported a service campaign to help with children being placed in foster care by DCFS. We are currently helping other schools in our community with their field days and their end-of-the-year events. So please join us in congratulating our betas on their amazing accomplishments. During our trip to Orlando, we will have the opportunity to compete again at national convention and enjoy some well-deserved downtime at Universal Studios. Our club will also be participating in another service project to help children in foster care in Florida. The Beta Club will be donating hygiene and comfort items in bulk to these children and participating in events around Orlando to help the community. To get our nine Beta members attending to Orlando, our club has taken on the responsibility of several fundraisers to help with the cost of convention. Betas that aren't attending have offered their support and helped us along the way. We wanted to say thank you for our support in helping us with our travel expenses for this trip. We promise to make St. James Parish proud. Thank you for your time and consideration on behalf of the entire senior Beta Club of St. James High School.
How can we say no?
I guess I need a motion. I need a motion.
So move.
By Sue, seconded by Raymond Grove. All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun. Have fun.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
B, discussion and approval of the 2025-2026 born meeting dates. This item aligns with Priority Five of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
You have before you a request for approval of the school board meeting dates for the 2025-2026 school year. We have previously said to everyone, just for you to review, we did take in some days or not the second Tuesday because of conferences and holidays. So, of course, your approval.
So moved by Diana Cantillo, seconded by Angela Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
C, discussion and approval of the following certificates of payment. This item aligns with Priority Three of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Ashley Monks.
Good afternoon. Tonight I bring before you, I have one certificate of payment that we're asking for approval for. It is for guy hop construction for the Lucha High School game gym renovations next door. It is in the amount of $213,373.42, and this is payout number two that we're asking for approval for tonight.
So moved by Tim DeTillier. Seconded by Raymond Grove. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
D, discussion and approval of hearing officer list for the 2025-2026 school year. This item aligns with Priority Five of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
I love that they should have a list of potential hearing officers in the event that we need a tenure hearing. This is the same list from last year. We did not have to remove or add anyone to the list. So we just ask for your approval on the updated list.
Motion by Sue, seconded by Coach Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
E, discussion and approval of food and non-food bids for the 2025-2026 school year. This item aligns with Priority Three of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Sharon Lovey.
Good afternoon. The Child Nutrition Department solicited approval for food and non-food items for the upcoming school year, 2025-26.
Motion by Diana Cantillo, seconded by Angela Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
With all eyes on TV, what you have to do about each other in the dark?
Believe me, I'm brainstorming to try to work through all of the different... And they even want to remove the red dyes. And it's like, you know?
And the idea is, they're coming up with this, but it's so expensive for us, even those that, you know, on food stamps.
Yes, it is.
They want to get rid of the snacks, but the real nutrition is so expensive. So I wish you all the best.
I'm even trying to do with the congregate feeding for the summer. We are going to do, I'm trying this, a polity this year. When they come on Thursday, I'm doing like a three-day take-home box that they can have for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thank you. Thank you.
F, discussion and approval of CEAT between St. James Parish School Board and St. James Parish Government in reference to the Fifth District Summer Camp. This item aligns with Priority Five of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Kelly Cook.
Each year, we have the Fifth District Camp hosted by the Parish Government, and they use SLA at the junction with Miss D with the summer feeding program. This year, they're only using a location. Remember, we used to also have buses. We don't have buses this year. So they'll be going for breakfast and lunch at SLA Monday through Thursdays. So this CEAT just covers us.
Motion by Raymond Grove, seconded by Tim DeTillier. All in favor?
Aye.
G, discussion and approval of school status contract. This item aligns with Priority Three of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. Sarah Foreside.
All right, good afternoon. So this is our school status contract. We've had school status now for a couple of years. Right now, we are utilizing the platform as two-way communication between our teachers and our parents. That will remain the same. However, we are asking for approval to renew that aspect of it and also add an additional piece called notify. And that piece is going to allow us to do mass messaging from the school administrative level, so principals can send out notifications to the entire school and also from the district level. So we'll be able to send out things to multiple school sites as well. This includes emergency messaging, general messages, flyers, things of that sort. Currently, we're using J-Campus for that, but combining, sorry, condensing and putting these things together within school status is a good communication tool to have because school status has been so successful with parents and teachers at this point. So it is a slight increase in cost. It is an additional $3,404 on top of the contract that we would be renewing at this point. And this is Title I funds. This would be coming out of Title I funds.
Motion by Coach Tim, seconded by Angela Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
H, discussion and approval... H, discussion and approval of E-rate resolution. This item aligns with Priority Two of the Board Strategic Action Plan, Ricky Bolden.
Good evening, come today just for our annual renewal of the E-rate resolution. Basically, this is just stating that we, as a district, are responsible for our portion of the E-rate funds. This is item one, and item two is for our actual internet and WAN service, item three is for the equipment for our Wi-Fi upgrade that we're looking to do next year. You can see that our portion is ten percent for services and only fifteen percent for equipment, and that's standard across the USAC guidelines, so I'm asking for approval for that.
Motion by Diana Cantillo, seconded by Sue Lai, all in favor?
Aye.
I, executive session.
Madam President, we're gonna handle, just for the purpose of the public so they understand, items I, J, K, and L in tandem, if there's any action items when we come back into open session, we will handle those individually. So we will be going in to discuss Civil Action Number Six Five dash CV dash one six one seven three dash F, Civil Action Number Two Five dash seven five eight M four, HSLI Claim Number STJX two four zero eight two six nine zero zero one zero, and HSLI Claim Number STJX two two one two two five one three four one zero, STJX two two zero seven two four seven four seven one zero. Just need a motion to that effect.
Motion by Raymond Grove, second by Marty Pochet, all in favor?
Aye.
So I make a motion that we return back to regular session?
I'll second.
First and second, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, this motion by Raymond, second by Marty, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. For item I, there will be no action taken at this time. For item J, no action at this time. Item K, with regard to that particular item, we need a motion to grant the legal authority as requested by outside counsel within the applicable limits.
So moved.
Moved by Marty Pochet, second by Diana Cantillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item L, we need a motion to grant the legal authority as requested by outside counsel within the applicable limits.
So moved.
Second.
Let's say have people say so.
And that's everything, no further action on those particular items, you can move on to the next agenda items.
All right, number five, close of meeting, condolences. We have Barbara Boujwa, retired cafeteria worker, Jacobin Kobe Johnson, son of Tanisha Johnson, cafeteria technician at Cypress Grove, Andrew Jackson, retired teacher, Frank Darcy Junior, brother of Marvile Acte, our gifted and talented teacher, Zadell Sutherland Oub, retired teacher, Kay Marie Bergeron, retired librarian, Damon Gro, relative of Board Member Raymond Grove, and C-three Director Terry Gro, Shandon Hickerson, St. James High graduate and relative of Board Member Raymond Grove and C-three Director Terry Gro. Need a motion. Not stupid, unanimous. All right, adjournment.
So moved, I make a motion here, second.
Raymond and Marty, all in favor?
Aye.